This is Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. I am Eric Castell, Councilman for the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. If my colleagues and anyone testifying would please turn other cameras on. Please note, we are going to first be doing Council Bill 21-0121, American Rescue Plan Funds Performance Oversight. Joined by my colleagues on the committee, the order that you appear on my screen, Councilwoman Danielle McCray, 2nd District, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Councilman Isaac Gitzey Schleifer, 5th District, Council Vice President Sharon Middleton, 6th District, and Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District. We are going to, and also joined by other members of the, or other members of the council, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. We are going to start with the agency reports. We will start with the Law Department.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Elena DePietre from the Law Department. I unfortunately just heard about this hearing when I got to work this morning, so I'm not prepared to offer the Law Department's report right now.
Thank you. At what time would you be prepared to offer a report, Elena?
Not today. Got a full plate.
Nope, I understand.
By the end of the week.
By the end of the week, thank you. Department of Finance?
Hi, this is Bob Sennemy, representing Department of Finance. We also don't have a report due to the lateness of the, of the hearing. I can provide just a couple of comments based on our look at the bill first thing this morning. You know, it, it looks like to us from the bill, there's a requirement or they're asking, council's asking for more, more detailed information on a more frequent basis. So we, you know, we generally support the idea of being transparent and making sure that information is submitted to the council on, on our, about ARPA and about our spending and our progress on the spending. We do think the bill goes a little bit too far, that it creates too many, too many requirements, and I think in some cases might defeat the purpose of what's trying to be achieved. So I know we've been working with MoGR and the Recovery Office to try to draft some, you know, some responses to, 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 I think, make the bill better, the bill better and more reasonable and try to get to achieve what the council's trying to get to. But we don't have a formal response now because again, of the lateness of the call into this hearing, but we can provide one as soon as possible.
Thank you, Bob. And how soon would that be?
I think by the end of the week.
Thank you, Bob. Let's go over to the Office of the City Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Nina Thummless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I'll be speaking on behalf of the City Administrator. And we also do not have a finalized report for this bill due to the short nature of our notification. I would like to state that the City Administrator is supportive of the legislation and its intent, but would like to recommend some amendments which I have in draft form and can share with the committee momentarily.
Thank you, Nina. If you would please, did you say you already did or you can?
I have the draft email. I just need to hit send. I was trying to make sure I had everybody's emails included on it.
Thank you. If you could please include, ensure that all seven council members are included. If you would also include Nikki Thompson, Matt Stagman, Erin DeGraffinright, Lawrence Anderson, and the Council President on that email, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Nina.
Will do.
Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs?
Mr. Chair, Nina Thummless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I'll also be speaking on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. Their draft report would also be in alignment with the City Administrators and being supportive of the legislation and its intent with those same proposed amendments, which I'll be sharing with the committee momentarily.
Thank you. Nina, we're gonna, if you could hit send on that. Colleagues, we're gonna take a brief five-minute recess and we will be right back. If you could, in the meantime, please keep an eye on your inbox and open up what you receive from Nina's end of things. Hey, colleagues, we are back in session. You should have received an amendment, or a, I'm sorry, an email with attached proposed amendments. Thummless, colleagues, if you could turn your cameras back on. There we go. All those beautiful faces on the City Council. Alright. Got a couple more coming online. There we go. Alright, colleagues, first, we're gonna start with questions for the agencies. I'm gonna start with the order that you appear on my screen. Go to Councilman Stokes first. Councilman Stokes, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton?
Sorry, having problems with the mute button. No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Yeah, I have a few. So I would start with Director Sennemy. You mentioned in your, well, we don't have an agency report, but in your comments, concerns about the intent, I guess, you noted that they were, the, some of the reporting may be counterproductive. I don't know if that's the word you used, but could you, I guess, elaborate a little bit more on concerns about the level of reporting? And I'm guessing, based on these amendments, there's concerns about aligning them with reports that are due for the U.S. Department of Treasury. So I guess, two-part question, elaborate on how, you know, the, this may be out of alignment with those requirements, if at all, and also for our own understanding, what the requirements are as far as frequency and level of reporting for the U.S. Treasury.
So I want to be clear on one thing first, is that finance is not the lead on the ARPA funding. So, you know, those questions, some of those questions on the details of the reporting, we have a whole office that was created for this purpose. So, you know, at first glance at the legislation, everything refers to the Director of Finance. There was an office set up with multiple FTEs, over 10 FTEs, that's responsible for responding to questions like this. So again, we had limited time to review this legislation, but at first glance, you know, this is something that the ARPA or the Recovery Office will need to respond to. But I can tell you my first instinct, at least in looking at the information, A is that monthly reports just seems to me to be too frequent. Just as an example, we do quarterly briefings for the council on the current year budget progress, which I think is reasonable. Things change drastically from week to week or month to month. I think quarterly is a better timeline for reporting. I know that there were separate hearings set up for quarterly updates on the progress of ARPA, which I think is more reasonable. So at first glance, I think any kind of monthly reporting is just to think again, over the top, there's some variation that, that, you know, things will change a little bit from month to month, and it's not worth kind of bringing folks together for that purpose. I think quarterly seems more reasonable. On the actual reporting, on, on what has to go to Treasury, again, there's a separate office that is set up to do that. I know the bill talks about the Director of Finance, and we have a role to play, of course. Finance Department has a strong role to play in this, in this funding. But the, you know, the reporting and the compliance and the process is all being driven by that Recovery Office, so we would defer to them on those particular questions.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, it sounds like that, that office isn't with us this morning to respond to that?
No, the, I like Government Relations, correct me if I have this wrong, but we were advised that the Director and Deputy Director of that office are unavailable. Nina, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. Unfortunately, with the short notice given for the hearing, they were not able to make it to this hearing this morning.
Okay. And I guess my, my next question would be for Mr. Petro, Law Department. The amendments that were sent, has the Law Department taken a position on those?
I have not seen them. They weren't sent to me.
Okay.
Nina, if you could please send those over to Elena. Thank you very much. And Bob Sennemy, just so they have.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is Marguerite. I think on those amendments, the first one should be line 27 instead of 23 on the very First Amendment.
Um. I think that's probably right. I read it and had the same thought and sent that to Nina in a text.
Okay, well, let's, Nina, if you can take a look at that suggestion from Marguerite and Councilman Dorsey. And we'll, we'll circle back to you, Nina, after we get through the rest of our colleagues. Councilman Burnett?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did have one more, if that's okay, or I can, I'm happy to go back to the bottom of the deck.
Get them all out of the way now.
So the other concern that I have, and we're just looking for a response from law, I mean, we've seen several agencies so far not be able to provide the council with a response due to the notice. My concern, I guess, to law is, are there issues with open meetings or anything like that to move on this? Without, with this level of notice going out to the public?
Yes, that there are issues. We, you know, the Open Meetings Act is a very fact-driven decision-making tool, basically. But it requires reasonable notice. Let me bring up real quick. The tieria. Alright, so, under the Open Meetings Act, as I just said, reasonable notice under the circumstances is the standard. There have been, you know, numerous opinions of the Compliance Board who receives initial complaints about potential violations of the, of the Open Meetings Act. And in those ca, in those cases, they did discuss a short term, a short notice, and when it was, what would be adequate for, under those circumstances. They did say in that regard that whatever methods can be used that would, you know, give the public, the best possible notice that they, that you could do under the circumstances would be ideal. So you wouldn't want to just use one form of notice. You'd want to use as many as you had at your disposal. In this case, it would be posting, it would be emails too, it would be notice to media outlets, that sort of thing. I'm unaware of what was done in this case. Let's see. And if you know that you're gonna have the meeting, but you're not sure about what the time or place is gonna be, you can also do a save the, save the time sort of notice, at least that, and tell people where to look for future, for additional information as to the actual scheduled time and place and date. So social media is another thing that they suggested when there's a short notice period. So that, that's the gist of it. I don't know, like I said, what was done in this case. It did seem to be rather short notice, so we would need additional facts to determine, you know, what would, whether it was, seemed to be adequate or not. The bottom line is, it's the Compliance Board that makes those decisions if there's a question.
Alright, okay. Thank you. And that's it for this round, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Elena, thank you for the, I'll get to Council Vice President Middleton next. I know she had something. Thank you for the analysis of that. There was a notice that was sent out last evening at 6:40 PM to a council distribution list, which sent out by the President's Office with the memo announcing that the Council Rule 10-4 has been waived. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna proceed today with a vote on this bill. We will check with City Council's Council, Mr. DeGraffinright, and we are happy to coordinate with, with your office, Elena, and if necessary, to ensure total compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Again, I'm not a lawyer and I don't have that language in front of me, and some of what you said did seem somewhat subjective and that there wasn't a certain amount of notice that was specified. We will, we will, we can reconvene and revote, but we do plan to move forward today. I certainly appreciate your input on that and would hope that you would work with us and with our council, Mr. DeGraffinright, to get to the bottom of that.
Happy to do so. I, I don't think there is like a specific amount of time that's mentioned in the act, so it's more based on other factors rather than time.
Certainly appreciate that.
The time is certainly an aspect of it, but it's not the total picture.
Certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McCray?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Vice President Milton, my apologies.
Thank you. Before you get to the next person for questioning, I just, because of some of the responses from the questions that Councilwoman Burnett had mentioned, Bob Sennemy can respond to this, but I was kind of taken back with his answer as far as with the monthly reporting. And we, as a council, you know, we're responsible for oversight of just about, of all the agencies. And this is a once, this ARPA money is a once-in-a-lifetime experience for all of us, for the administrative process and the legislative process. And, you know, government in general has a problem with getting information out on a timely manner, getting to constituents that don't have emails. We are part of that arm that helps with that. And there should be a partnership with the Finance Department and this new department that was developed for the ARPA money. So to make a statement that, you know, almost saying that, look, they're, they handle this money, they, you know, that just shows me that the monthly reporting needs to happen. It needs to happen monthly. Again, this is a once-in-a-lifetime experience to help and move the problems of our city forward. So I don't know if Bob wants to respond to that again, but I, I just, I was kind of in shock by that answer.
Well, I would like to respond to that. There was a whole office created, the Office of Recovery, to manage this money. I am not saying that finance doesn't play a strong role in that. We are involved in all those discussions, but the reporting and the compliance, there is, there's no way that our staff individually can meet a monthly reporting requirement. We have a tiny staff. There was an office created for this purpose. So all we are saying is that for the requirements, we would ask that they be quarterly and that you get input from the Office of Recovery on what they can report, because we don't have monthly reporting on any other financial information that I'm aware of. Like I said, we have quarterly updates, you know, budget briefings on the, you know, the status of the current budget. There were already quarterly briefing set up for the Recovery Office to report on these things. So again, I'm just being realistic on staffing and, and the ability to report and just being clear that, that these questions need to go through the Recovery Office. There's a 10, 11-person staff that was budgeted for, just for the purpose of reporting, managing the process and complying with federal law on these funds. So I apologize if you took, if, if that was interpreted as that we don't have a stake in this. That is not the case at all. Finance has a strong case in it. We've given, you know, like I've told folks before here, you know, we're serving on the team. I'm personally serving on the team to review proposals. We take all that very seriously. But the reporting and compliance is a lot of work. It's a lot of staff time to do that. And, you know, we're just asking the council to be smart and respectful about what information they need at what time so that we can provide the information that will help folks on the council understand it and make the best possible decisions.
And that's why the monthly reporting is so important. It's, it's having dialogue with each other and, and us sharing problems and things that we see happening in our respective districts as we go out in the communities and bring this back. And quarterly is a, is a very long time to do that. We're talking about having a dialogue. Of course, you, you know, any, anything you say, any kind of reporting is important. And we're trying to bring people together monthly because of this once-time, once-in-a-lifetime experience in helping our city. This is, again, we are in crisis. This is an emergency. Yes, your people are short-staffed. We, we are short-staffed, but we have, we have a job that we have to continue to do. And just asking you to come once a month is really not asking a lot. And it's a chance for us to work together, not just reporting to us, us sharing the needs and things that we also deal with. It's not just reporting the dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Councilwoman McCray?
Mr. Chair, I had, I had a few questions, but the office that I would like to speak to is not here. As Director Sennemy said, it's 10, 11 people on staff within the office that facilitates the ARPA dollars, and I see other agency heads and multiple people from certain agencies who have decided to show up. We have all decided to show up on this committee, but I can't ask my questions because they're not here. So at this time, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We did McCray, Middleton, Burnett, Stokes. Councilman Dorsey? Councilman Dorsey still on?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I guess I am a little confused about the Recovery Office. And because I am just getting to reading this bill here very last minute, I'm trying to wrap my head around a couple of things. I'm trying to do two things at once. One thing is, in the first, in requesting these amendments, are we requ, I mean, these reports, are we requesting these reports of the Director of Finance? I mean, I, or of, or of the Director of the Recovery Office?
My understanding, Councilman, and I'm gonna ask Erin DeGraffinright from the President's Office to chime in and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the, the council does not have the legal authority to direct the Mayor's Office through ordinance to do reporting. And that's why specifically it's directing the Department of Finance. Mr. DeGraffinright, can you please opine on that?
I mean, that's a very reasonable explanation to me.
Mr. Chair?
Well, hang on, or hang on, either Nikki or Erin, that's fine. I just want to have someone opine on that. Nikki, please feel free to opine, but I want our council to, to confirm whatever we're saying is correct, please, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll defer to Director Thompson for the moment.
Thank you, Council. Turn on my camera so y'all can see me. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add and point Councilmember Dorsey to the additional language that allows for other coordinating agencies to work with the Department of Finance to provide this information. So as already shared by some of the other agencies in their reports, it's very clear that there will need to be some coordination amongst the various agencies to be able to provide these monthly reports. But we are hoping that that is something that the agencies are already doing in order to meet their Treasury report requirements, and that's why the language is also included in the legislation. Thank you.
Nikki, thank you so much. And Erin, you concur with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yep, just want to make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is here. Thank you. And Director Thompson, thank you for the explanation. Back to you, Councilman Dorsey.
Okay, so Elena, that makes sense. I mean, to me, the Law Department would kind of concur with that, that we.
That was one of my initial thoughts. I'm sorry, I didn't need to know.
We can't direct the Mayor's Office, but we, we can, we could legally ask for a report from the Finance Director.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but that was one thing that I was going to treat in our, in our bill report. So I don't want to talk off the top of my head in something that is a little more complex than that.
Okay, but at the very least, we do have the, already asked for a report of the Finance Director, I guess. Okay, um, so I guess my questions have to do with trying to get a general sense of from MoGR or anybody of like being amenable to alternative amendments here. You know, I'm looking at the bill, I'm looking at this amendment. The amendment from MoGR strikes everything on page two from line 17 down and the first few lines of page three. There's obviously value in looking at data and metrics regarding how the funds have increased the effectiveness of city government services and broaden the reach of city government services and everything that's in Section B1 here. And there's obviously value in the transparency of having key performance indicators identified as in Section two, B2. But I can understand the Finance Department and others' concern in having to produce kind of change metrics for all of these things on a monthly basis. You know, it would be, since, it would seem reasonable to me to say that if we were to do the monthly financial reports that MoGR is suggesting with their amendment, that we also look at these other data and metric points on a quarterly basis and that within, say, 30 days of enactment of the bill, that the City Council be given a list of the key performance indicators that are listed in, in, in 49 to B2. Can somebody kind of give me a sense of how that vibes with them? To be very informal about this, because it feels very informal here right now.
Councilman, when you say someone, can you advise who you're, a little more specific?
As an alternative to the amendment?
Someone, like a person? Which, which person are you looking for to comment here?
I'd like to hear from, I guess, Nina on MoGR's amenability to this alternative amendment here. And if I need to reiterate what I'm saying, I can do that. I'd like to hear from Bob on that. And I'd like to hear from the President's Office on that.
Alright, let's start with Nina, and then Bob, and then President's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the reason behind requesting the First Amendment, which was to request the removal of all the metrics and replace with just a monthly financial report, was speaking exactly to what you were saying as far as the ability to measure such things on a monthly basis versus on a quarterly basis, which would be much more reasonable. I can't speak directly for Director Kearney, but that was what she had communicated to me as far as the request to. but that was, um, what she had communicated to me as far as the request to amend the monthly report to being only financial reporting. So I believe, um, most if not all of the metrics that were requested in that monthly report would be reasonable to be included in a quarterly report. And there is a fairly detailed series of requirements from the U.S. Treasury for the quarterly and annual reporting, which I can share with the committee, um, as well, just so that, um, there's awareness of what is required at that level. Um, if, if that would be desirable. I'm not sure if that answers your question, Councilman.
Bob?
Hi, so, you know, just to echo my, my comments earlier, you know, we're just seeing these amendments for the first time this morning. Um, you know, just looked at this bill for the first time earlier. Again, my instinct from our perspective is that, uh, monthly is just too frequent that, that, um, you know, too much information and, and not meaningful information for that short of a time period. Um, and then again, I would defer to, you know, MOGR and the, in the Recovery Office about the reporting, making it consistent with the, the federal guidelines. Again, because that was the office that was set up to ensure compliance with those, with those laws.
Uh, I'd like to just clarify based on that response, what, uh, at least a bare minimum here. Bob, I imagine you're not saying it, it's too much work to do a financial report on a monthly basis. I mean, that's like an output of data that's in a spreadsheet somewhere or whatever, right?
Right.
Doing a financial report on a monthly basis is not a big deal, right?
Right, right. What we're saying is it might not be meaningful.
It's, it, it might not be meaningful, but it, I don't know, it, it's doable in a way that the other metrics, uh, are maybe less doable, but also perhaps not quite as meaningful as they would be on a quarterly basis. I feel like there's just, are we really going to see the impacts of spending at these level of, this level of measurability on a monthly basis? Probably not, but on a quarterly basis, yes.
Right, right. That's what we're trying to get to, is that sure, we can pull a report that says how much has been spent on a monthly basis. But, you know, again, since these are bigger, larger scale, meant to be larger, more, you know, transformational type, type spending, you know, it's hard to see that on a month, on a monthly basis. So, yes, you can report monthly on what has been spent, but I don't see that as being meaningful for the types of things we're trying to achieve here.
But if we were going to a quarterly basis, we probably wouldn't have a problem, um, including the, in those quarterly reports, the things that are enumerated in Section 49 to B.
Um, let me pull up that sec, can you, or do you have it in front of you? What, what are you referring to in 49?
49 to B is what details what should be included in the monthly reports as written in the bill. I'm saying if these were on a quarterly basis, it would say, provide data and metrics regarding how the funds have increased the effectiveness of city government services, broaden the reach of city government services, made city government services more efficient, or made city government services more sustainable, and identify key performance metrics, indicators, benchmarks, and targets relating to equity as defined in Article 139.1 of the City Code. Population growth, growth, labor and employment, economic growth, especially the growth of minority and women-owned businesses and community benefit. Seems like that could all be put into a quarterly report that would probably make sense to correlate with a quarterly, with the quarterly briefing that is required in the next subsection here.
Uh, yes, I would agree, although that's a lot of information. Um, so, uh, you know, want to make sure we connect with the, with the Recovery Office to, to just clarify each of those individual, uh, requests. But again, I think quarterly is, is a better, um, reporting timeline, given the, you know, given the nature of this type of spending.
Nikki, let's jump over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so if I may, Councilmember Dorsey, to your proposed change to the amendments, I just want to highlight that, and this legislation is meant to align with the dispersment. And to date, we've had about $130 million announced for dispersments already within two weeks. So it's really important that we not only, um, consider our perspective of the data that we would like to collect for the council, but we also want to make sure that we are aligning this information with the same amount of time of the dispersments to provide that level of transparency and public engagement. So while quarterly may, uh, be more feasible in some way, shape, or form, uh, we already have the quarterly reports that go to the Department of Treasury, so that would be quite redundant. We are intentionally trying to narrow down to what's needed right here in Baltimore City. And so we think the monthly reports will be able to provide that trajectory, especially if the dispersments can, announcements at least, continue at the rate with which they'd be done.
So to be clear, you said redundant, but the things here in Section 49 to B, Section one and two, these do go beyond what would go into the quarterly Treasury report, do they not?
They do and would be in addition to what we would receive. So we have basically two instances. We're trying to use the monthly reports to be more of a narrowly tailored picture and then using the additional quarterly and then later annual report to be a long-term tracking, uh, basically measure for us to consistently look back at to see if there was a, a large return on investment based off of how the money was spent. More to your point, yes, those particular pieces would be in addition. But if we were to, that, those, that would be the only new information that we would have if we were to try to meet this medium of quarterly reports.
Councilman, you good?
I mean, I think I've heard answers. Um, uh, I haven't, I haven't even read and, um, been able to comprehend the effect of MOGR's second and third amendment requests. Um, so I've, I've really only been able to comprehend and think about, consider the first one. Um, and I think that I like my alternative proposal to it more than, more than their amendment and more than the bill as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, lastly, Councilman Schleifer, any questions for the agencies?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Bob, uh, how much is, uh, the, the MONC budget for this year?
Um, I can, I can pull it up from the budget book if you give me a moment. I don't have the exact number.
Okay, thank you.
So let's go into our, our budget publications.
I can also respond to that. With, with grants, the MONC budget is 27 million in fiscal '22.
And how much, how much of that, uh, that 26 is, um, is, is coming from the general fund? You said with grants. So without grants, how much is it coming from the city?
Give me one second. General fund is 10.9 million.
Okay, so 10.9 million is coming from, from the city budget. Um, the announcement the mayor just made uh, gives $50 million of this funding, uh, to that agency. Um, does that agency have capacity to, to take that major windfall, that five times the amount of money that, that we've given them this year? It's a new office. I know, um, for some reason, there was a new office created to manage this funding instead of going through the Planning Department, which is the agency that manages this, this type of stuff generally. Um, does that office have the capacity to, to manage $50 million?
So fir, first thing first, um, that, that announcement, that 50 million is over a three to four year, year period of time. So that, that's not an annual amount, just, just to be clear. Uh, thank you for, for mayor, for, for looking up that number. Um, in terms of the capacity, I know, um, because some of the, some of the money will be provided to, um, you know, individuals or organizations in the community to do some of the work. So it's not necessarily, um, all work being done by MONC, but more coordinating some of the work that will be done in the, in the community on violence interruption. So, um, but I can't speak more to it than that from just having seen kind of a preliminary estimate, uh, for how that money will be, will be dispersed.
So is that money going to be over and above, uh, the funding that they normally would get this year, next year, and the year after? Or is it going to be in place of some of that funding?
Um, I mean, their, their, their basic general fund budget largely just covers some of the things that we're already doing. Um, some of the administrative costs. Um, they have, uh, coordination of some programs, things like Safe Streets and Roka, for example, that the city's already doing. There's, uh, their current budget also includes crime cameras, uh, in their existing budget. So this is more focused on, you know, additional violence reduction, uh, activities. So, um, mostly on top, in addition to what they already have in their base, which is kind of the bare, bare minimum.
So how, how many employees work, uh, in that department?
So again, let me pull up the, let me pull up their uh, budget here, which I have in front of me. So MONC, we currently have a total of 17 FTEs. 15 of them are, are general funded and two that are federal, federally funded.
So, uh, with, with 17 employees, do they have the capacity to more than double in size each year for the next three years? Or are they going to require additional, uh, staffing to manage this windfall?
Um, so I, I, I can't answer that at this point. I, I'd need to go through, you know, that budget in, in, in more detail.
Gotcha. Um, thank you. And, uh, my next question, I don't know who can answer it because there's not, not really so many, uh, agency folks on the call, but, um, Ms. Kearney, who's, uh, overseeing this new office, this newly created $11 million office, is, um, right now standing in Park Heights, talking about where the funding's going to go. Um, and, uh, one of the announcements they made was they listed off three nonprofits that are going to be beneficiaries of, of a chunk of that money. I mean, Baltimore City has, has over 15,000 nonprofits that operate in or around the city. Um, did those three nonprofits submit proposals already? And can those proposals be forwarded to the committee and the council?
So Nina Thumm was with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. As you mentioned, uh, there might not be somebody on this, uh, hearing who'd be able to answer that question specifically, but I'm more than happy to get back to the committee with an answer to your question and provide, um, the proposals if, if they have, um, been submitted. I'm not sure. I'd have to get back to you.
Okay, thank you. So just for clarity to the chairman, uh, my request is, number one, for a copy of the proposals that came from those three nonprofits that were listed at the press conference today, uh, that are main beneficiaries of this. Um, and just to reference back to our previous hearing where we met Ms. Kearney, she said that they would be more than happy to send us the proposals from organizations that have been applying. So, um, that's just in line with what she's already said, uh, would be provided. So if we can get those three proposals and also if we can get a listing of how much money of this $50 million is pledged to them uh, and over what period of time? Mr. Chair, is that, is that okay?
100%. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, and, um, my next question, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll go back to Bob if that's okay. Uh, Bob, one of the things listed, um, at the press conference this morning was, was a, um, a, a creation of a new program, uh, that, that we'd be funding. And so was, has there been any conversation about, um, how that program is going to continue to be funded after this money runs out?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part. Which, which program are you referring to?
Uh, the mayor announced that there's going to be a new program created, uh, in partnerships, uh, with, um, with other agencies to, uh, create a job readiness reentry program, which is very important. But my question is, how, uh, is that program going to be funded after this money runs out? Has that been part of the conversation as to how can we make this a long-term program as opposed to just a temporary program?
So, once the money runs out, we will either have to find savings within the existing budget or to phase out those programs that we do. So, you know, a big, uh, priority a, as we've gone through this is to try to emphasize, I mean, we, you know, one-time spending. We don't have a hard and fast rule that we, you know, can't do anything that has some longer term or, or longer term cost impact. But we've been trying to look at things that we can scale up and potentially scale down if either they're not working or, you know, they work to make the impact that we, we intend and that they're not needed as much going forward. So that has been a consideration on, on all the, all the projects.
Okay, so there hasn't been a, um, so there's no plan in place right now to keep the, keep the program going beyond when the money runs out?
No.
Okay. Um, all right, Mr. Chair, do I get one more?
One more.
All right, thank you. Um, my, um, I guess my last question, um, would be when, in our last hearing that we had, um, Ms. Kearney had stated that, um, there was no, there was no plans for, for anything being funded just yet. I don't, I don't remember the exact quote, um, but she said something along the lines that we didn't, you know, they hadn't made any decisions yet. Does that mean that this $130 million dollars, which have been allocated over the past, uh, seven days, does that mean that, that decision, those decisions have all been made since that hearing?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I can respond to that question? Um, I believe in the October 5th hearing, Director Kearney mentioned that there were a series of decisions being made around the five pillars, um, of the mayor's priorities and that there were detailed conversations going on and that there had not been final dollar amounts reached, but that there were detailed conversations that had taken place. She also mentioned that announcements would be taking place over the course of the month of October.
So, so this, uh, $130 million that represents, um, over 20% of the money, those, those decisions weren't made, you know, weren't made three weeks ago. They were made over the course of the past two weeks?
I believe that, as the director had mentioned, final decisions had not been made at the time of the October 5th hearing as far as specific spending amounts and the specific pots of money. But I would have to come back to the committee with more specific information concerning the timeline of when final decisions were made.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Margery, do we have anyone from the public on here who needs to testify?
Mr. Chair, I would hope that they use the raise hand function if someone wanted to testify. Give them a minute or so to raise their hand. Currently, no one has their hand up. And we have one, one call in that I can unmute.
Yep, please unmute the caller and then we'll take any raised hands.
Okay. Call-in user, do you have anything you would like to say to, oh, I think they just, they just left the meeting, so. Okay, we'll wait for the raised hands. Anyone wants to testify or make any comments? Could you please use your raise hand function? None, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one, a couple of questions.
Councilwoman, I'm going to ask you to be very brief and, and make sure they're on task here.
Sure, absolutely. Um, to, uh, um, Nina, I have a question about amendment number two. Um, it says that, uh, you know, we would, uh, do a financial disclosure with, um, and then it talks about the type of what, what the Department of the Treasury had. Aren't they changing their regulations here and there? So putting the date of June 24th, um, may not be the best way to go because they have, they do change them every so often?
So putting the date of June twenty-fourth um may not be the best way to go because they have, they do change them every so often?
Sorry, one moment. I'll have to pull up the amendment so that I can see to what you're speaking about amendment number two.
Yes. It says that the project and expenditure reports required by the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds guidance on recipient compliance. And reporting responsibilities issued by the U.S. Treasury on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Don't they do amendments to their issuances? And so putting a, I'm not sure if a date makes sense to put there.
Yes, Councilwoman, I, I can understand that perspective and if removing the date would allow for flexibility and ensuring that we will be complying with what the federal guidelines are. If and when they're changed would make sense. Um, those were just the guidelines that were issued at the time and they're still the ones that are in place. But I would, I can understand that maybe removing the specific date would allow for um better flexibility and alignment with those.
Okay, thanks. And then also just clarifying that you wanted to have the annual report on October first and sets the beginning of the fiscal year, the federal fiscal year. And so the um alignment of the funding and the reports would be on the federal fiscal year and not on air fiscal year. Is that right?
Um, that is the date for the federal fiscal year. However, the date selected was to be in alignment with the first um quarterly briefing that was provided by the Recovery Office. Which took place on October fifth and then also to allow the council um time to review the annual report, which is actually due on July thirty-first. Um, and to uh make any requests of the office to provide additional clarity in advance of um convening a hearing to discuss it.
And Nina and Councilwoman, I'll provide clarification. Those, those dates were worked out in coordination between. Self, the council president's office and the, the, the Recovery Office to align with the, the federal reporting schedule. Which, which does not exactly align with either our fiscal year or the federal fiscal year. So those are, those are dates that have been previously agreed upon.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Mister Chair, I have a lot of questions for the Recovery Office. So when they can join us on a hearing, I'll ask them there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, colleagues, uh, there's a uh second email from Nina. Uh, that email was sent at uh. An email was sent at ten thirty-six AM. Uh, we're now going to entertain those amendments one by one. Uh, amendment number one, is there a motion?
Mister Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
I'm sorry. I'm just wondering, due to the short notice of this. If before entertaining these amendments from the mayor's office, before entertaining a vote on this bill. Um, if I could be given time to prepare uh some modified amendments, uh, which I'm already doing now. It might take me fifteen or twenty minutes to do it. I'm wondering if it's possible we could recess this hearing. In order to hear the other previously scheduled oversight hearing with the school department and come back to this. In time for me to be able to put these amendments on the table before the committee.
Um, which amendments are you talking about, Councilman? Like out of Nina's amendments, one, two, and three?
I am drafting a amendment right now that kind of splits up their amendment number one. To address it um differently, as I explained.
What we're gonna do is um, we're gonna vote on the amendments as is and then we'll entertain a motion on the bill. In the meantime, if you want to draft those amendments up between now and when the school system uh hearing is completed. I'm happy to entertain a motion from the committee to reconvene this meeting and to consider your amendments. Do you find that to be a reasonable compromise?
I guess I'd rather that we didn't have to vote to reconvene once we've already uh voted on the bill. I wish we, I would prefer that we just not vote the bill yet until my amendments have been heard.
How much time do you need, Councilman?
Fifteen minutes.
You're on the clock. You have fifteen minutes. I'm reconvening this hearing at ten thirty on the dot with or without your amendments.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Colleagues, are there any discussion on, on proposed amendments one, two, and three before we go into recess and call the city school system hearing to order?
Mister Chair, real quick, Councilman Stokes, you said ten thirty. Do you mean eleven thirty?
Yes. Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you keeping me on task. Eleven thirty on the dot. Seeing that there's none, um, Councilman, I'm assuming you're drafting up one amendment?
It is two amendments to split the content of the mayor's office amendment number one.
So we'll be, so we'll be, we will be entertaining five total amendments. We'll do those individually. We'll start with the three amendments from the mayor's office and then we will entertain the two amendments from Councilman Dorsey.
Actually, I can draft it as one single amendment. Thank you.
Councilman, I'm, I'm indifferent. You, you do however many you want. You're, you're, you're a member of the committee, so you do as you wish. Um, I tell you what, we're gonna, we're just gonna go into recess now. We're gonna reconvene at ten thirty and then, and then we're, ah. Pardon me. You're going to go into recess now. We will convene at eleven thirty in fourteen minutes. We will handle uh this matter and then we will move to the city school system uh oversight hearing. See everyone in fourteen minutes sharp. Thank you. Colleagues, we're back in session. If you could please turn your cameras on. Councilman Dorsey, you have amendments? Please circulate those to the committee. We're gonna start with uh the. Mayor's Office Amendments, Amendment Number One. Is there a motion to move that amendment? Colleagues, go on one more time. Is there a motion to move Mayor's Office Amendment Number One? That amendment dies for lack of a motion?
Uh, well, I was gonna say, can we, I mean, it's without seeing Dorsey's amendment, it's hard to. Figure out what is the best uh choice to make uh in, in this discussion here.
I've just sent them off and in the interest of trying to fire it off as quickly as I can, I sent it to Margery, I sent it to the chair, I sent it to Nikki Thompson and to um, to Nina Themelis. I didn't get everybody from the committee.
Forward, I'm forwarding it to the committee right, Councilman. Okay, you want to start with Councilman Dorsey's amendment number one?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um. The um, the amendment. Uh, as I um kind of described earlier in the hearing. Retains the idea of monthly reports, but in the manner uh as is in the administration's amendment. Uh. Making them a monthly financial report, saying each month the director shall submit a financial report to the city council that ex, that includes the funding allocations for that month. Um, and uh then it says also on page two, uh in line sixteen and seventeen, replace monthly with quarterly. Retaining all of the requested information as in the original bill, except uh. Changing it from monthly reports uh to quarterly reports. And uh making any necessary adjustments to the uh numbering of the ordinance. Amendment number two kind of goes with this um and adds a new section at the um. At the end of the bill prior to section two, it should say section two. I apologize, I forgot to add in there, section two. Uh, within thirty days of enactment of this ordinance, the director shall submit to the city council those performance indicators, benchmarks, and targets. Identified in forty-nine-two B two of this ordinance, uh, which are the same benchmarks, uh, indicators and targets. Um, that are uh, that we would get on a quarterly basis, uh, being sure that we would get them. Sooner than three months from the enactment of this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there a motion to move Councilman Dorsey's amendment?
I make a motion to move amendment number one.
Motion by Burnett to move Councilman Dorsey Amendment Number One. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dorsey. Costello's a no. Middleton?
No.
Schleifer?
I, I haven't even gotten the email, so no.
I want a second. That's because I sent it to Chris Burn, Councilman Burnett twice, so. Schleifer, my sincere apologies. We'll go, come back to you. McCray?
Well, I already voted. I voted no.
Okay, McCray?
No.
Burnett?
Yes.
Stokes?
No.
Dorsey?
Yes.
This amendment fails, two in favor, five in support. Councilman Dorsey Amendment Number Two? If you'd like to explain.
Uh, I did. Uh, in my previous remarks, uh, it requires the submitting of this information uh in forty-nine-two B two. Forty-nine-one B two, um. Within thirty days of enactment of the ordinance, but um. I mean, if we're not, seeing as we've failed my first amendment, it renders the second one pointless. I mean, there really could just be one amendment together, so. I'm not gonna bother.
Okay, so there's no motion to move Councilman Dorsey Amendment Number Two?
Not for me.
Okay, seeing there's no motion, uh, the amendment dies for lack of a motion. Let's move to administration amendment number one. Is there a motion to move that amendment?
To move.
Motion by Dorsey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Burnett. Costello is a no. Middleton?
No.
Schleifer?
No.
McCray?
No.
Burnett?
Yes.
Stokes?
No.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Uh, this amendment fails with two in favor and five opposed. Is there a motion to move Mayor's Office Amendment Number Two? One last call. Is there a motion to move Mayor's Office Amendment Number Two? This amendment fails for lack of a motion. Is there a motion to move Mayor's Office Amendment Number Three?
I'm moved.
Last call. Is there a motion to move Mayor's Office Amendment Number Three?
Moved by Dorsey.
Motion by Dorsey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, ah, pardon me, second by Burnett. Costello is a no. Middleton?
No.
Schleifer?
No.
McCray?
No.
Burnett?
Yes.
Stokes?
No.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Uh, this amendment fails, two in support, five opposed. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably? And I'll note that the bill has been unamended.
Motion to move the bill?
Motion by McCray, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton. Costello's a yes. Middleton?
I just want to just quickly make a statement and uh, yeah, the answer is yes. And I just, um. We thrive, and I thought the administration thrives on transparency, working uh to better communicate. With all agency, between all agencies with the council. And uh with what we're about to do again, as I said, this is just a, uh, this is. This experience is a once in a lifetime thing and we have to get it right the first time. So um. Uh, my vote is a yes on this bill as is.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Schleifer?
Yes.
Thank you. McCray?
Yes.
Burnett?
Uh, I'd like to explain my vote, Mister Chair. Um, so I, I would like to note that uh, I, I, I do um share the sentiments uh around. Uh, the need for better communication uh from the administration on these issues. Um. In, increased briefing and, and so I, I do support the intent of the uh council president's office in, in introducing this and trying to move it quickly. Um, but I'm uncomfortable uh given the uh, you know, less than twenty-four hours' notice to the public. Uh, as well as uh the bill not having any agency reports or, or additional hearings, um, which would be in greater alignment with. How this body has been operating uh this term. Uh, we've had almost every bill have multiple hearings. Uh, we've. Delayed scheduling of hearings until we had agency reports so that we could be as deliberative as possible uh when considering. Uh, the legislative process and anything that we're voting for. So um, while I, I do support the intent, um, the lack of information uh before us. Uh, I'm gonna be abstaining, Mister Chair.
That's an abstention?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Stokes?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I'd just like to second um almost everything that uh Councilman Burnett has just said. Although I'm not gonna be abstaining, I, because I'd like to also uh second virtually everything uh. Stated by Vice President Middleton, um, that uh transparency is of the utmost importance. And it is important that we get it right the first time. And I just do not believe that this gets it right the first time. Um, I, I wish we had a little bit more time in order to uh have a little more discussion about this bill and get it better. Um, and so I have to vote no on it in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this bill passes with five votes in support, uh, one against and one abstention. It moves to second reader at the next meeting of the city council. Uh, we're now gonna take a two-minute recess and we'll come back for the city schools hearing.